And all of our prayers, our hearts go out to him and his family as he has gone through what must be an impossible time. I can't even imagine on the pain and the grief that he's gone through. So everybody, please, just send him your love and your good thoughts. But his staff did ask me to read three resolutions.
They're not here yet.
Oh, they're not here yet? Okay.
Two minutes.
No?
Not here.
Okay. So I guess we'll have to wait until they come?
Five minutes, send it. Go to the meeting.
Okay, alright. Thanks, Mike. And before we conduct our business, I want to read and present three resolutions. As you all know, from March 9th, 2012 to March the 17th, it's Irish Heritage Week. And one of the things that makes this great municipality so great, it is its diversity. And so we want to bring on two individuals. One individual who's going to serve as the Deputy Grand Marshal, and the other individual will serve as the Grand Marshal for the parade. So we'll wait until they come up. So you are Deborah Humphrey? So the first resolution that I'm going to present is to Sister Deborah L. Humphreys, who will be the Deputy Grand Marshal. And I'm going to read it, and help me out if I get stuck on a word that I can't pronounce, right? Whereas Sister Deborah L. Humphreys is a counselor of the leadership team of the Sisters of Charity of St. Elizabeth, and she is very fluent in Gaelic. That's interesting. Which she learned through her participation in...
Dalti Na Gaelga.
Dalti Na Gaelga. And whereas the Newark Municipal Council recognizes the many contributions that Irish-Americans have made to our state and nation, and whereas the city of Newark, through its long and illustrious history, has benefited greatly from the citizens of Irish heritage, and whereas the sons and daughters of the Old Sod have a glorious place in the history of our fair city, and continue to this day to make great strides and accomplishments in many fields of endeavor, such as the arts, public service, business and industry, which have enriched the fabric of this great metropolis. And whereas the Newark Municipal Council wishes to publicly recognize the magnificent achievements of this group and the people that are behind the organization, now therefore be resolved by the Municipal Council of the City of Newark, New Jersey, that it does hereby recognize and commend Sister Deborah L. Humphreys as a 2012 Deputy Grand Marshal of the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Whoo, there you go. Congratulations. Okay, so now let's see how long this one is. I think it says the same thing. Alright. So I'm going to say ditto to what I said before, but again to Mr. Kevin Cummings, and to, you know, be named the Grand Marshal, that's a great achievement. And so I want to congratulate you on behalf of the Municipal Council, and I look forward to clear skies and white clouds and a great parade. Thank you very much, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So do you want to say something? Are you sure? Sister, do you want to say anything? Okay, you're welcome.
I just wanted to say that, see, some people thought that St. Columba had to do with Columbus, but actually St. Columba was an Irish saint. And Mother Xavier founded the Sisters of Charity at St. Patrick over 153 years ago. And our neighborhood at St. Columba has, as one of its former residents, Jackie Gleason, who was married to St. Columba. So we're really delighted. I've been a Newark resident for 40 years, and recently have been working up the motherhouse. So it's a great honor, and we thank you for this honor.
Thank you. ...of the National Anthem, and remain standing for the invocation by the Reverend Raymond Greer of the Bread of Life Church here in Newark.
We all bow our heads, praise Most Holy and Gracious Father, Lord God, as we come to this meeting this morning, we come with open hearts, thanksgiving in our hearts, for you being such a loving God, so kind, so mercy. We invite your presence to come into this meeting and have your way. Touch each heart, each problem, for we know that you are a problem solver. We ask you to remember the councilman, the Beread family. We ask you, Lord, to wrap your arms around them like the walls is wrapped around Jerusalem. Give them your protection. Let them know that they are being loved. Let them know that they never alone, for you say you are never leavers, nor forsakers. Bless these members. We ask you to anoint them to do your business. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Mr. President, in accordance with the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, ad hoc notice has been provided to the Star Ledger, the Jersey Journal, and to the public at large establishing the date, time, and location of this meeting. May I have a roll call of those present, please?
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
President Ramos.
Councilman Baraka.
Yeah, I'd like you to indulge me for a second, please, before we begin this business for today, and hopefully it isn't too harsh. You guys won't walk out on me. The way me and Mildred walked out on me. I just want to say that, first, you know, when I came to this council, I tried to be as humble and cooperative, if I should say, as I possibly could, to try to fight the kind of image that I know people put out there about young radical activists in the community. And I make no mistake or no apologies for being a radical or an activist in my community. So I tried to change that, but I see that that has had no avail here with this administration or anybody. I just think that what the mayor did to the council was completely ridiculous and disrespectful. The President of the United States would not have done that, and he has all of the reason in the world to lamb blast the Republicans on that Congress, based on the things that they have said, done, emailed, postcards, all kinds of things they've done to him. I thought it was like the kids say, "School on Christmas, no class." It was disrespectful, and I don't apologize for walking out. And if he did it again, I would do it again. So I just want people to know that. That's number one. And I'm not, you know, I'm saying this because I got some other things that I really need to say, and I don't want to say it because I don't want to take up the people's right to speak during that section, because I think I'm going to be quiet at that time. Also, everybody in this city know that I am a principal of Central High School, and I'm also a councilman in Newark, New Jersey. The people knew that before they voted for me. They voted for me anyway, and by the grace of God and by the will of the people, that is the case. There are many people on this council that have more than one job, but I seem to be the one that's being exploited, and I don't have a problem with that because it comes with the territory. But I'm going to tell you this, I went to Howard University, I got a master, a degree in history and political science, I became a schoolteacher, I worked for Newark Public Schools for 20 years, nobody gave me anything. I don't like being in the likes with Joe D. and other people in the state that have been given things or no-show jobs. My job is hard. I worked there every day, and we're making serious progress at Central High School. You can ask the kids, Tom Moran can follow me if he likes. I asked, I invited him, he refused to, because he didn't know how I could do it. He don't know Paul Robeson, so I'm sure he don't know how it could be done. And I'm sure him or nobody in his family could do it. I worked there for 20 years, half of that time as a teacher. Whatever the union salary is, that's what I made. I ran for office when I was 24 years old and didn't get elected until 16 years later. I work hard for the people in the South Ward, and I do not apologize for being a South Ward councilman or a principal at the same time. Nobody else in the state is apologizing. If you have a problem with the salary, then the council have years to reduce it, or whatever we're going to decide to do, we do. But I didn't make that up, and I'm not going to shy away from the work that I do every single day that is hard for us to do up here as a council with this person around the corner here, who is, you know, really turned the responsibility of leading the city onto the council, because he has done nothing, you know, in my estimation, in my opinion, to move this city forward. Here's a man who goes around the country speaking and gets thousands of dollars for that, plus his salary. He has raised millions of dollars for this Teacher Village project, $200 million for, I mean, for this slush fund that he has, but he can't seem to raise money for this revenue for this city. I think is wrong, is incomprehensible that he's allowed to do this, and we say or do nothing as a council. I think it's absolutely incorrect that we allow this to go on and on and on and on without one move. I think one thing he did say that was correct was that there was inaction. He didn't like our budget, and he put all this stuff up. I'm going to tell you this, what we should do is we should pick a weekend and create the budget ourselves.
That's right.
And send him a budget without all of the people that he has in there, all of these provisional employees, all these other folks. We should take all of those people out and redo the budget and send it back and put the ball back in his court. Put our money where his mouth is. That's what we should do. Tom Moran, I remember Tom Moran from the last, when I was on his council before, and his whole $80 million thing. He is a fan of Cory Booker. When I left here, the Port Authority just gave the city $400 million. $400 million. We brought that arena with it, the rest of it was put in four years for tax relief. There was $80 million left over, there was a fund created to split up between awards and to help what? The library, programs like that, even Casa de Don Pedro, I Y O, all these programs that we set. And Tom Moran and Mayor Booker had a serious campaign to stop the spending. They went to the State House, spending was stopped. When we left here, that money was in the budget. It's not in the budget, because when he came, he hired all of these consultants, stop me if I'm wrong, hired all these consultants, brought all these people on for high salaries, got all of these provisional employees on staff, and now has to reduce staff by firing Newark workers. That's wrong, and it's not leadership. It's absolutely wrong, and it's not, I mean, if you think I'm filibustering, I am. I'm going to change my whole approach to what I've been doing up here. So if I vote no on a couple of things, please forgive me, colleagues, because that's the way I'm going right now. I'm upset. You know what I'm really upset at? I'm upset that we sat council in a room downstairs and agreed, all of us, to have a press conference. We agreed to have a press conference. Not six of us, all of us, agreed to have a press conference. And do another strategy that Council colleague Quintana came up with, which was to send stuff out to the houses. We agreed to that. Now, people didn't show up to that. If they had a meeting with the mayor afterwards, or did any other things afterwards, or come up with a plan of their own, I think that that is wrong, and it is a way to allow the mayor to divide this council and to use us as pawns against one another. I'm not playing that game anymore with anybody up here. If you do that, to me, I'm going to expose you on this county thing. I'm telling you that now. I'm tired of this game. I'm not playing games, because people have their own political agenda. I'm not doing it anymore. Count me out. I'm not a team player. I'm not on the thing anymore. I'm done and completely done with it. I think what he did was wrong, and anybody that knew that was going to happen should go down with him. And anybody that participated in that should be identified with him. And when the mayor leaves, because he will leave, that the people who are sneaking around with him ought to leave with him. Just be a man about it. If this is what you believe, then you should come out and say that is what you believe. And I'm going to tell you this, the mayor is not going to run unopposed. If he tries to run next time, he's not going to run unopposed. He's not. And I'm going to tell you this, I'm myself going to come up with an exploratory committee to see if Raz Baraka should run for mayor in an upcoming election coming up. Now, if nobody else step up, that's on them. If we step, if you step up, we can have a conversation about who should do it. But ain't nobody saying nothing publicly. Everybody is playing games, having meetings behind closed doors, playing around with this mayor while he destroys this council. I'm not playing that game anymore. I'm not playing with them, and I'm not playing with y'all. So I'm telling you this, I'm starting an exploratory committee tomorrow to see if Raz Baraka should be the mayor of this city. And if you don't like it, plan a meeting and we can talk about it. That's it.
Councilwoman Crump.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. For as long as I have been elected to this council, beginning my second time around, the mantra for my political life as well as my personal life has been, "Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth." We have been hoodwinked.
That's right.
We have been fooled, we have been used, and what happened Thursday night was inevitable for Mildred Crump. I had a partner, as it turned out, but it was inevitable for me. When the speech began, and there was reference made to, "I love Newark and I love these people," my heart sank, because if you love people, they will know it. And if you don't, they will know it too.
That's right.
And so by the time we got to one of the untruths, I could no longer take it. And I refuse, I absolutely refuse to allow someone to disrespect me. I got elected just as he did, and serves as a, what I would like to think is an acceptable in my sight, public servant. I like Raz Baraka, I am not taking it anymore. I've had enough, and I'm fed up with the, as well as with the mendacity that is being practiced here in City Hall. We're supposed to be about the business of making life better for the people of this community, not better for ourselves, not better for our friends, but for the people who elected us to come down here and serve you. And so, like Councilman Baraka, I'm not running for mayor, I'm not doing that. But I'm here to support whomever emerges as a leader within the next year and a half. I'm here to support, but I'm not, I'm not taking nonsense anymore. And so I too pass on to my colleagues information that if you want to play games, count me out. I'm not, I'm fed up, I'm old enough to say that what is right should be right. And if there are some things that people want to do, and I don't have a problem with ambition. I got where I am because of ambition.
Right.
And all of us did. But there is, for me, there is going to be an end where ambition is the most important thing that takes place between the nine of us. And it breaks my heart, actually, to be able to say this, because we started out with so much promise. And unfortunately, because we don't have the nerve, and I do mean the nerve, to talk back and to require of this administration an honest day's work for an honest dollar, then shame on us. I am delighted that there was at least one other person who said, "I'm not letting somebody embarrass me like this." And I do know that the mayor has the rumor going around that the reason I am anti-him is because I'm no longer president. To his face, say this to all who are listening in this room and who are watching, to his face, with Mo Butler present in the room, I said to him, "You did me a favor, because I can now be Mildred. I don't have to cover anymore. I drank the Jim Jones Kool-Aid, but I live to see another day." And so, and so as Councilman Baraka has stated, you're going to see a new, you're going to see the real Mildred, the real Mildred. I didn't get here by bending rules, I got here by following my own conscience and what I thought was right. And so for those of you who supported our efforts, thank you so much. For those of you who didn't, what can I tell you? I do know, and I'm going to close with this remark, I received several emails from state legislators, and they said not even Chris Christie would have done to the legislature what the mayor did to us. And we're, but what's worse is we're supposed to be friends. We're supposed to have a relationship. I'm finished, Mr. President, but I'm through. I'm through being Mr. Nice Guy. I'm working for the people of this community, and if there are people who don't like it, that's their problem.
President.
Councilman Quintana.
President, to listen to the audience, the reason why I did not attend the State of the City address, I have sat in this council for many years. I've had my disagreements with the past administration, which sharpened. We disagreed a lot of times, but it never got to that level of arrogance. We had many times that we had different difficulties dealing with each other, but we had respect for each other.
Right.
And whether we agree or disagree, because we put the city of Newark first. And my reason for not attending is because I see the handwriting on the wall. And I see the handwriting on the wall of the arrogance that the State of the City has to continue being at a performing arts center. For whom and for what? City employees. City employees. I remember the years that we had it here. I remember the years we had it at Symphony Hall. What is the arrogance? What is this whole thing of taking it somewhere else? The same thing with the superintendent of school. She decided to go take a meeting up at Rutgers to suppress the people of the city, bringing the Rutgers police to try to be the bullies on us. And I'm here to tell you one thing. I'll be elected with or without this mayor. When he was playing with Hot Wheels, I was here. Okay? And I'm gonna put that right on the record. I don't need him to get elected. And I wanna make, I wanna put that on the line. But I want some respect until the day I leave this council's chambers. I want respect for the citizens of this city. I want him to respect this council and not play this little tug-of-war with the city council. That's what he has done. That's what he does. And it is time for him to understand that if this continues, we will place a vote of no confidence on him. And I'm prepared to do that. And it doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. Because we're tired, I am sick and tired of someone who continues to play the council. Let me say this, and I wanna put this on the record. Since this mayor has been mayor, I've been to his office two occasions, invited to his office. One was about the MUA. The other one was because of Saladin's indictment. And that, and my concern is that I'm sick and tired. When I had problems with Sharp, and I would go into that office, "Sharp, I need to talk to you." Whether we agreed or disagreed with each other, whether Sharp said to me, "We want the water, we want a privatized water too at one time." And I said, "Sharp, I can't do that." We disagreed, but we respect each other. And we walked into a rooms, and let me tell you what a State of the City is supposed to be, Mr. Mayor. A State of the City should be that you sit with ward council people, and you say, "Council Rice, what's going on in the east ward that we need to highlight?
That's right.
Councilman Amador, what do we need to highlight in your east ward?
That's right.
What do we need to highlight in the south ward? In the north ward? In the central ward?" And what has occurred here is that, let me play you guys. You come to the puppet show, and I'll tell you what to dictate to you. And we're tired of that. We got elected the same way, and I don't care how much money you can have in an election. Elections are not gonna be about money no more. People are sick and tired in this city. Under his leadership, taxes have gone 21% since he's been mayor of this city. And I'm sick and tired of people lying, and then about the city council, misspens and plays with the council. Well, you gotta start in your house first, before you start attacking somebody else's house. Look at your house first. If you live in a glass house, be careful. And what I'm saying to this administration, it is the arrogance, and it continues to say, "I'm not running for nothing but a councilman that I've been." And I'm proud to be a part of this city. When people were playing with Hot Wheels, Barbie dolls, and et cetera, I was here. I was here, and I plan to stay here. Because I got here because of coalition, because of coalition building. He don't understand about coalition building, because he wasn't here in 1970, Black and Puerto Rican Convention. I was 10 years old in this city. And I know the struggles of this city, and I know what it took me to get here. If it wasn't for Tucker and Sharp, even Sharp, I would not have been sitting here on this city council, and all the words of the city. But I'm tired of people playing us, and I'm tired of being played, because I'm not gonna be played by none of them. I seen them come, and I'll see them go.
Council President. Council President.
Councilman Sharif. I'm always gonna be, I mean, when I see the mayor, I'll say, "Hi, how you doing, Mr. Mayor?" When I see his staff, I'll always do that, because you can be civil, but we still can be effective. Last year, when we went through the whole budget exercise, and it took a long time for us to give us the budget, I was the person to say, "Let's hold everything hostage and only vote on those things that have to do with the health, the safety, and the welfare." And so, I, we have to get five votes right up here. Just five votes. And we have to, especially where ward council people are concerned, we have to sit together and decide what is the best interest of our respective wards, and then we have to work together and support each other's projects. But everything that does not go directly to how our wards develop, then we need to hold that dumb hostage. I don't care anything about the mayor's, I was gonna call them attack dogs, but they're attack puppies. I don't care about them or anybody. I just care about our agenda and what we're trying to do. It's interesting that this mayor, and it happened when Councilman Baraka and I came to the council, he tried to reintroduce the MUA, right? But what people don't know, and I'm really putting together a timeline, the first time that this administration introduced the MUA was in January of 2009. January 2009. And an interesting thing happened when we got closer to the elections of May 2010. Heat started to get turned up, and the mayor, a person who always talks about putting the interests of the people first, made a political decision and calculation. Because he was getting so much heat, he said, "We want to get everybody through, and then we're gonna introduce the MUA again." If you don't believe it, they sent it to local finance in January of 2009. I didn't vote for that MUA because it was flawed, but the biggest flaw, because this mayor didn't step up and show leadership when he got into office in 2006, and he tried to be Christie-like on the stage, but he never has exhibited any courage. The first thing he should have done in 2006 is said, "I've got some tough decisions to make." So, when the police representatives came to him, the fire representatives came to him to negotiate, he should have done it in good faith and been a leader, and not said to them what they wanted to hear, just so he could get elected in 2010. And so, here we are now with this MUA, which, like the one before, a big chunk of the money has nothing to do with repairing the infrastructure. Everybody on this council knows, because we all reviewed the Hatch-Mott-McDonald report, which says that we have $500 million over a 10-year period to repair our infrastructure. Everybody gets that. But a big chunk of the money in the MUA in 2010, which was $70 million, and a big chunk in an MUA that we haven't seen yet.
That's right.
We haven't scored it. We don't know what it is. It's to plug the budget. The one thing that this mayor has not done in six years is pursue any serious revenue generating opportunities. In 2006, we had two Democratic governors, one in New Jersey and one in New York. And those are the two governors whose help you need if you want to do something with the Port Authority. And so, he could have leaned on the governor here, the governor there, and say, "How can we work together to produce more money from this asset that we own, so the 10% that we get for the net revenue produced by the Port, we could have had that as recurring revenue?" So, had he stepped up and demonstrated leadership in 2006 and worked it and worked it and worked it, we might very well not be in this fiscal crisis that we are of now. And so, I don't need to respond to what he did and how he behaved at his, at the hearing, at the State of the City. I'm ready to find four additional council people up here who will get together and say, "What is our pro Newark agenda? And how do we protect that agenda, so that when he comes after us, we go after him?" I got a call from some distressed city workers that worked in Motors last week, and I went down to see them. And you guess, and soon as I got back, I went down, 7:00 in the morning, and the meeting with one person turned into the meeting with two people, three people, but then there was a spy in the group that called City Hall and told that I'd gone down. Then people in City Hall were talking to me, "Well, Councilman, you don't want to violate the Faulkner Act by talking." I said, "What do you mean? I can talk to city workers. What are you talking about?" And then, all those people downstairs, who normally talk to me to see where I am on a given issue, they must have got the word, "Don't call Councilman Sharif." And so, I want to make it clear to everybody here. Everybody knows my story and how I got here. This mayor, when I ran for office, was pounding the table, saying that we're gonna crush Darren. He'll never make it to the council. I didn't get one single dime from the mayor's fund. I had not one single meeting with anybody on his team, and all of the other power brokers in this city were determined not to give me a chance to represent you. And so, nobody should say where my loyalties are. Just look at my bank account and who didn't pay into my fund. But at the end of the day, we really have to develop agenda. I want to look past this mayor, because I think we diminish ourselves when we always talk about Mayor Booker. We have to prepare for a post-Booker Newark. And that requires a lot of hard work. That requires a lot of effort on all of our part. But while we're here, we have to now be able to have each other's back in a serious way. So, you know, we're gonna find four council people, and we're gonna stick together, and we're gonna force him to do what he should do, because he says he represents the people.
Last thing, I agree with you. Oh, go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Let Councilman Rice speak.
Yeah, I'll be brief, but this budget, and we had the press conference, it's important that, since we didn't get a lot of the press coverage, I'm glad it was taped, that we got to tell our side to the, directly to the American, to the citizens of the city of Newark. So, I like that idea about us coming up with our own budget. And the reality is this, is that, and I'm gonna keep saying it over and over again, we can debate whether the council's budget is crazy or needs to be cut. This I know, that we've cut every year we've been on this council, and we'll continue to cut. But you are not gonna save this city budget with 1.6% of the budget cuts, when 90, what does that leave us? 98. whatever percent of the budget is not seriously being looked at, not just for cuts, for revenue generation. The President of the United States of America, at the State of the City address for the last two times, has told a Republican House, "You cannot cut your way out of this deficit. You cannot cut your way back into economic prosperity. We have to talk revenues." And this council, this council has put forth over 30 revenue-generating ideas that the governor has not looked at, and yes, I'm gonna put it on the delegation, of our S's delegation has not drilled down into, and yes, that the mayor of this town has not drilled down into. We gave it to him before he proposed the MUA. We gave it to him when the MUA failed. We're giving it to him every year thereafter. And so, I agree with you. If we cannot force this administration to have a serious discussion, because it's not just about this budget, and then next year is about the next budget, it's about a real economic emancipation for this city, a declaration of economic independence for the city of Newark. And we want to have that discussion, that's the discussion we need to be talking about, because if it's not being led by the second floor, it has to be led by the third floor. I'll join any one of my colleagues that are deadly serious about that kind of decision-making that has to happen. God knows, we don't come up with the ideas. We've done our homework. And the last thing I'm gonna say is about the MUA. If you don't think that the MUA, and listen, I'm not trying to try to look at who, the reasons for some people who want it and who don't want it. I'm not trying to get anybody's mind or heart. The newspaper, the Star-Ledger, if they had done the research they've done on us and what our 1.6% budget is, then why wasn't the homework done on what the MUA's consequences are gonna be? The Star-Ledger had the nerve to say and endorse the MUA as a short-term budget gimmick to solve a budget crisis in this year.
Because they got paid.
The reality is this. If you don't think an MUA could, if you think an MUA can work, somebody ought to go talk to Mayor Hornick in Marlboro, because I did, and he's who changed my mind about it. The MUA was started off to do the exact same thing it's been prepared to do in the city of Newark. You know, infrastructure improvements, investments, those kind of things. And Mayor Hornick of Marlboro has been on record of saying, "It became a Frankenstein. It grew amongst itself, and it became its own bureaucracy that he could no longer chop at the root and tear apart." Because, so now, he's in court doing exactly what we're gonna be in court doing 20 years from now, and that is trying to get out of the MUA for the city of Marlboro. We can't afford to do, listen, if you think that's a good idea, God bless you. There are better ones, and there are better ones that don't take control away from us. And so, the reality is, I'm for real revenue projection, real revenue ideas, real revenue that's gonna solve our problems once and for all, and not pass the bucket, kick the can down the road, and I'll work with anybody that wants to do that seriously.
The last thing, real short, I just think that...
Councilman Baraka.
I'm sorry. The, what Councilman Sharif said is correct, that, and I want to, you know, and I don't do this all the time, I want to agree with Shockley when he comes up here and says that it's not about the mayor all the time, because, you know, actually, we do need to change and get this budget and do the budget ourselves. I want to thank Sandra Hughes for writing me an email, because she was mad that I didn't come to those budget meetings, because I was really boycotting them, because I wasn't voting for none of that budget anyway. I said, "I'm not voting for it, and I'm not doing it." But in reality, we need to create our own budget. And what's shameful, that what the Star-Ledger said, we should be ashamed, what they should be ashamed of is, one, they knowing, if there was no council at all, no council, no staff members, no perks, no anything, we can get rid of all of that, I don't care. We can get rid of, we can get rid of flowers, trips, get rid of all of it. Let's cut it all. Cut it all. We can get rid of all of that. If none of that existed, we would still be in the situation we're in. Still, there would be no movement forward. So, the reality is, what is the reason that they're doing that? They joined with the administration to steer the people's attention away from what the real problem is, and to bully us into supporting this stupid MUA, which is a bad idea, and is gonna put the people in debt for years, and I'm never gonna vote for it, in a time of rain, when nobody at the Star-Ledger can bully me to do that. What they really should be ashamed of is the amount of blacks, Latinos, and women they have as editors and reporters for that newspaper that's in a predominantly black and Latino city.
Let me just remind the public that today's, today's council meeting is following some of the changes that were approved. Previous meetings, yesterday, we had the first televised pre-council meeting right here in this chamber. We went through a pretty lengthy discussion on all the agenda items. The public's invited to be a part of it, and there were a few residents that did stay and ask questions related to the agenda items. So, the hearing of citizens will be held at the end of the business meeting. Each speaker has up to five minutes, no more, and, you know, we're gonna conduct this meeting orderly with respect for one another. So, Mr. Clark, proceed with the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Council of the whole to accept the reports and recommendations of the boards and commissions.
Should do it. We did. We should do that before the hearing is...
Here.
Yes, enough. Yes. What is this for?
Council of the whole to accept the reports of the boards and commissions.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Clark, before we proceed with the ordinances and resolutions, this body as a whole would like to have a moment of silence and recognition of someone that led this body some years ago, distinguishedly served the residents of this city as a councilman, as a freeholder, and forever shall be known and remembered as Newark's congressman. So, at this time, a moment of silence for Congressman Donald Payne. Ordinances.
Ordinances on first reading. Six FAs is an ordinance amending section 23:5-14E. This would add Bleecker Street to the existing parking permit area designated list. Councilman Sharif moves, second by Councilman Quintana, to adopt on first reading.
Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
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 Absent President Ramos.
Yes.
Ordinance on public hearing, second reading and final passage. Six PSNFA is an ordinance amending section 23:15-4 yield intersections. This would revise the yield sign regulations. Council, is there anyone present that wishes to be heard on this ordinance?
No one appearing.
No one appearing. Motion, Council of the whole to close the public hearing and adopt.
Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Sharif.
Ramos, yes.
B is an ordinance regulating the placement and maintenance of misuse of news racks in the city of Newark. Councilman, is there anyone present that wishes to be heard on this ordinance?
No one appearing. No one appearing.
No one appearing. Councilman Ramos wishes to close the public hearing and adopt, second by-
Second.
Councilman Gonzalez, roll call.
Not entirely in mind.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Paine absent, President Ramos.
Yes.
Ordinance on final, second reading and final passage. Six S F A is an ordinance amending Title VIII Business and Occupations. This would provide for handicapped access to small and medium-sized grocery stores. Councilman Rice wishes to defer action at this time.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We're on page four.
Page four.
No, we're top page five. I have a wrong, okay, I bet.
You have an-
Yeah, defer, I'm sorry. I've got a bad agenda, I'm sorry. Somebody give me an update.
So, Rice wishes to defer the ordinance, second, someone?
Second.
Councilman Crump was the co-sponsor.
Roll call to defer.
Amator.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Rice. Yeah, just sort of viewing all these, those in the chambers, we're just deferring action until we can get some more clarification. As most people know, Ms. Delmore and Ms. Tenfor Evans have been working with myself and Councilman Crump on this particular legislation, and we just want to make sure it is adhering to the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act in terms of its specifics, and so, we want to make sure it's compliant. But as soon as we have our next meeting, Councilwoman, I think we should be able to knock out what changes need to be made, and we'll be able to vote on it then. Just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Next item.
B is an ordinance amending section 23:5-3 parking prohibitions. This is for taxi stands. Council of the whole to defer action at this time.
Why are we deferring on this?
They have not, I'm sorry, they have not provided us with the list of where the taxi stands are going to be. We've been asking for the last meeting, and-
Is there any way we could do it?
Mr. Clark, Councilman Baraka is the chair of the Taxi Committee. You had recommended yesterday that we defer this item, right?
Excuse me?
You had recommended yesterday that this item be deferred?
Yes.
So, someone needs to talk to the chair of the Taxi Committee and explain why that's the reason.
Yeah, I met with those, the cab drivers, taxi drivers, at least 100 of them, and they are waiting for this to happen, because they're getting cheated out here, so.
We will follow up with the traffic and signals and get them, force them to give us the list that the council is looking for-
Do we have a special next week, Mr. Clark?
Yes. Would it be acceptable, Councilman, to defer to the special?
Yes.
Defer to the special on the 13th? Roll call to defer to the special meeting on the 13th.
Amator.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Absent President Ramos.
Yes. Resolutions?
Resolution 7R1A is a ratifying and authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for contract with subrecipient for youth services.
Council President, I just, I don't, I mean, I have a write-up about what this is, but I'm not sure. It doesn't really say much. I don't know who these people are, and what, when was the last CDBG meeting that was supposed to take place? Because I wasn't invited, I thought I wasn't part of that.
This is, if I can, Mr. Clark, this is an older grant that was awarded to this organization. This is the actual contract with this group, and if you wish to defer, to get more information from economic development, I don't have a problem.
I just want to make sure that, going forward, that, you know, when we had these CDBG meetings that I'm invited to and participate-
The last meeting that was held, it was stated at the council meeting, the date and time, and there were a number of council people there-
I didn't get that.
That participated. But we'll make sure, moving forward through the clerk-
2011.
That we schedule and notify the council, and we could do it as councils as a whole. We could have Mike Meyer come in with Adam Zipkin and just give us an update. But just to be clear, this is a contract with this organization based on an award that's probably two or three years old. What's your pleasure, you want to defer?
We can, no, we can vote on it, they have the money already, you're saying? We just vote on the contract?
This is just the actual contract with them.
All right.
Councils as a whole.
Yes.
Baraka.
abstain.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Paine.
Yes.
President Ramos.
Yes.
7R1B is a ratifying, authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for temporary emergency appropriation for the truancy alternative program. One C is also a ratifying, authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for temporary emergency appropriation for the truancy alternative program. Councilwoman Crump moves, second by Councilman Quintana. Roll call.
Amator.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Abstain.
Yes.
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 Absent President Ramos.
I abstain too. Next item.
7R1D is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for the use of a state contract for vehicles, passenger vehicles, this is automobiles, vans, and SUVs. Council pleasure.
Defer.
Defer to Tuesday.
Hope to defer, Councilman Quintana, second, Amador.
We're deferring to Tuesday, to the special?
You want to do Tuesday?
Roll call.
Amator.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yeah.
Trump.
Yes, to defer.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes, to defer.
President Ramos.
Yes.
E is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration to use a state contract for the purchase of a dump truck.
Councils as a whole.
We're deferring? Deferring to the special?
It's up to the council, but I suggest we defer this too.
You're sure, yeah.
I thought inadequate explanation was given regarding this purchase yesterday, so I'm not in favor of deferring.
This is a companion vehicle for the truck, the equipment that was recently purchased to clean the sewer.
Right.
Trains.
Correct.
Councils as a whole, vote your conscience.
Why wasn't this bought at the time that we bought the cleaning?
Well, I can't explain that.
Councils as a whole.
Councils as a whole to adopt, roll call.
Amator.
Abstain.
Baraka.
Abstain.
Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Paine absent, President Ramos.
Yes.
Next item.
7R1F is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for transfer of CDBG funds. G is also an authorization for the Department of Administration for the transfer of CDBG funds. H is also a transfer of CDBG funds through 7R1H.
If I can, Mr. Chair, you want to sponsor H for the playground?
Yeah, I don't know what F and G is, I want to sponsor H.
Baraka for H.
Mr. President.
Councilman Crump.
As I mentioned in the meeting yesterday, 7R1F and 7R, no, just 7R1F, where they're asking us to vote on the transfer of funds for two, what I consider entirely different projects. One is the health centers, which we desperately need, and the other is for the design of the new, I did go back and check, and it's just for the picture. The design of the new animal shelter.
They put it together.
And so, they put them together and makes it difficult to support the package as a whole. And I said yesterday, is there any way to, when the business administrator was here, was there any way to separate these two? Because certainly we need to fund the FQH, the federally qualified health centers, but I'm not willing to spend a lot of money to design a new animal shelter.
If I can, Mr. Clark, and maybe what we should do is defer these two items for the special. You know, the city, and my colleagues are aware, we spend a lot of money every month on the emergency contract with the Humane Society, you know, for an animal shelter. The city made a commitment some years ago that it wanted to build an animal shelter. Obviously, you know, the utilization of community development block grant funds reduced the amount of city funds that's needed to build this. The federally qualified clinic that's almost completed on Williams Street, you know, was pretty much put together using a lot of the federal stimulus CDBG funds. So, when these organizations and projects have funds that go unexpended, the administration has the opportunity, after the council reviews the recommendations-
We should say no.
-to go to HUD to try to reprogram some of those dollars to different projects. But I think we need to have a presentation on the shelter, animal shelter, what's the timeline, you know, how much are we looking to spend, and how much would it save the city long-term by not having to contract that out? And from what I understand, there are other towns around the county and other counties that want to contract with the city for this service. But I think this item does merit a presentation by the administration. So, if we wanted to defer this to the special, have a presentation on the shelter, and also address some of your concerns, Councilwoman, I think that may be a good idea.
That's good.
Okay, so I move to defer this to the special.
Let's separate these, and we'll do 7R1F and G to defer to the special.
Yeah, with a presentation, the detailed presentation on the animal shelter. How much have we committed and expended so far? And how much are we estimating it's going to cost to build? And if any, how much city contribution is going to go toward the construction, or is it all funded through grants?
Mr. President, I do believe the figure that was presented to us was $600,000 for the, yeah, for the building of the animal shelter.
I would believe it's a lot more than that.
It's much more than that. It's a- Folks, you know, I don't disagree. I don't want to get into this, you know, the animal shelter thing, you know, I appreciate it and I support it, I don't want to be vilified like Michael Vick or anybody. But I just want to tell you, man, there are some people that need some shelter, and there's some, and, you know, there's a lot of places in the South that I could use this reprogramming money for, but I think what the Councilwoman is saying is that it should be separated and not bundled to give us an opportunity to vote on one or the other or have a discussion about both, which is only fair to do, so I support deferring it as well.
All right, so I move to defer, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Gonzalez. Roll call.
Amator.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and for that meeting, Mr. Clark, can we have the amount that we spend monthly on this contract right now?
Mr. President.
For the current animal shelters.
Yes. Yes, I believe we spend $825,000 in that contract yearly, and is increasing. That's why we were going to do the shelters, to save some money.
Eight hundred twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, let's just get, let's get the last three years in terms of how much we've spent
on this. Next item.
H, Councilman Baraka wishes to sponsor, do I have a second for H?
Quintana.
Yes.
Quintana, roll call.
Amator.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Paine absent, President Ramos.
Yes.
I is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for temporary emergency appropriation for the fiscal year 2012 Subregional Transportation Planning Program.
An emergency.
J is a, let's do these separate, let's separate these. Let's do 7R1I, Council of the whole to adopt.
Roll call.
Yes.
Baraka.
No.
Trump.
Abstain.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trump.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Yes.
Absent President Ramos.
Yes.
Adopted. 7R1J is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Administration for a bid contract for fire hoses and fittings.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman.
In an effort not to get caught up in the conversation that took place before the meeting began, we do need to be mindful of the fact that there are items on this agenda that will affect the quality of life for the people we serve. And to that end and purpose, having had a major fire on my street just recently, I'd like to sponsor this.
Second, someone?
Second.
Gonzalez, roll call.
Amator.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Trump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Paine absent, President Ramos.
Yes. Next item.
K is an authorization for the Department of Administration for a bid contract for data processing supplies.
Council pleasure.
Council of the whole to adopt. Roll call.
Amator.
No.
Baraka.
No.
Trump.
No.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Quintana.
No.
Rice.
No.
Sharif.
No.
Absent President Ramos.
No. Fails. Next item.
L is an authorization for the Department of Administration for a bid contract for paint, paint tools, and supplies. Council of the whole to adopt.
Roll call.
Amator.
No.
Baraka.
No.
Trump.
No.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
No.
Rice.
No.
Sharif?
No.
Captain President Ramos.
Yes.
Fails to adopt?
M?
M is a authorization for the Department of Administration for a bid contract for reflecting, sheeting, for signed material. Council of the whole to adopt?
Roll call.
Amador?
No.
Baraka?
Abstain.
Trump?
No.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
No.
Rice?
Abstain.
Sharif?
No.
Captain President Ramos.
Yes.
Fails to adopt. 7R3A is a ratifying, authorizing, and amending resolution for the Department of Economic and Housing Development. Amending resolution 7R1J for the meeting of May 18, 2011, contract with subrecipro. This would extend the contract period to December 31, 2012.
We have B and C that are time only extensions as well, right?
Yes. 7R1B is a ratifying, authorizing, and amending resolution for the, which would extend the contract period also to December 31. Councilman Rice wishes to be sponsor on B. And C is a ratifying, authorizing, and amending resolution, also extending the contract period to December 31. Council of the whole for A and C, and Rice, do I have a second for, for B?
I'll second, Rice is.
Thank you. Can, 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 can we, uh, are this, is this the same as the last one you said? These are just contracts from before, or?
Well, these are contracts that were previously approved, and they are getting a time only extension to complete those projects.
So when, when was the last CDBG meeting that I happened to, uh, not listen to or hear at the last meeting? I mean, who was there? I don't remember it, like, because I didn't know nothing about it, so.
Yeah, we can ask the clerk to research when that meeting was, and have Calixto provide minutes.
I mean, wasn't y'all there? Don't nobody know when it was?
I, I was there.
I wasn't there.
We had representatives, Councilman Payne, and the administration basically just gave a presentation on its plan, so we can...
Isn't there a committee that we have, a council, that, uh, helps make decisions about where the CDBG money goes?
There is an ad hoc committee that was formed by the president, and like I said before, at the last meeting, the administration was there. They gave their presentation.
Am I on that committee? I thought I was on that committee.
I think we all should be in that committee.
But am I on it?
I'll have to look at the list, I don't, I don't have the list.
I thought I was on that committee, because I, I should get a formal kind of invitation and shouldn't have to sit here at the council meeting and listen to people saying when the meeting is. If I don't get a letter, or a phone call, or email that says when a committee meeting is, I think it's disrespectful to me to do that, especially if you're giving money to all these people that I have no knowledge of, and nobody getting no money in the South Ward. So, I need a formal, I need some formal kind of, uh, invitation.
And through you, Mr. Clerk, we'll research to see if Councilman Baraka's, uh, member that committed, if he's not, you know, we can make a recommendation to Council President that he be appointed, um, and perhaps we should schedule, like I said, a presentation with Mr. Meyer, Mr. Zipkin, Council as a whole, just to update us in terms of where we are. Um, but I will note that as part of reprogramming, um, you know, we do have projects that came from the administration, and these are just time only extension on contracts that were approved by this council some time ago.
Is this for, I'm sorry, I just noticed ratifying. So this is for work completed?
Yeah, yep.
Well, these are grants and contracts that have been approved by the council previously, and the action you're taking today is just extending the time that they have to complete those projects.
We are, we are ratifying because the, the, the existing contract ends on December 31, 2011. We are ratifying back to January 1st and moving forward to December 31, 2012. That's what the ratification is for.
So, do we have a report or something on why they need an extension? I did not read the backup, so.
It was in the backup material. There, there, they need some additional time to complete the, the projects themselves.
Okay. I thought these, I thought these were new.
We got a motion, uh, Council as a whole, with the exception of, uh, the youth bill contract, which is being sponsored by Rice, and second by Gonzalez. We got a, roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Uh, yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
They, they already spent the money.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Captain President Ramos.
Yes.
Mr. President, I want to change my vote on 7R3C. I want to abstain, because, uh, if you recall my conversation, um, Weekwake Park Association, I asked how much money, uh, had they received, what was the largest grant that they had received? I did not receive that information, uh, in time for this meeting, and I'm not mad with Branch Brook Park Alliance, but, um, Wilbur McNeil and that group, um, has been relegated to a, a corner, and so I ask at that meeting that we get, um, and a, a statement as to the, the largest grant awarded. I mean, has Weekwake Park ever been granted $232,914 or above?
And Mr. Clerk, if...
So I'm abstaining on that.
So noted. Um, my suggestion yesterday is that we pay a lot of attention to leveling the playing field for goods and services, and I think through the clerk's office, and this could be a project from the council as well, is that we hold some kind of forum, uh, to work with, you know, a lot of these smaller, informal, uh, nonprofit and community-based organizations, and walk them through the process on how to apply for different grant opportunities that the city offers. You know, I think, uh, you know, we've, we've talked to a lot of groups, they want to be a part of our process, but a lot of times, they're intimidated by the paperwork, and they're very, um, you know, confused as to when the RFPs are advertised, et cetera. So let's work on organizing something, perhaps as Council as a whole, right here in this chamber, so that we can advise these groups and invite the different departments within the city that do offer, uh, grant opportunities. Let's do that under motion, sir.
That's good.
Engineering?
7R4A is a authorizing resolution for the Department of Engineering for a professional services contract for the construction, administration, and management of services for the renovation of Chestnut Street Firehouse. Uh, Mr. President, at the request of the state monitor, I would ask that the council defer action at this time on this item.
So noted.
Roll call.
Amador?
Where we at?
Defer. I'll put page 15.
Return to administration.
Yes.
Hold.
Yes. Defer.
Deferring, yes.
Trump?
Yes, to defer.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes, defer.
Wait, point of clarification, is this the defer, a defer, or is this a return to administration? We're deferring action at this time.
Deferring.
Okay, defer, uh, yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Captain President Ramos.
Yes.
B is a authorizing and amending resolution for the Department of Engineering for professional, professional services contract. This is change order number one to the contract for the design, construction, administration, and management of the Hayes Park East renovation project.
Like to sponsor that?
A second?
Second.
Roll call. Quintana?
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif? Captain President Ramos.
Yes.
C is a ratifying, authorizing, and amending resolution for a bid tr- contract for the enclosed fence that Doug, around the Douglas Harrison Homes. Councilman Sharif wishes to defer action at this time. Do I have a second for defer?
I'll second.
Roll call to defer.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Captain President Ramos.
D is a ratifying, authorizing, and amending resolution for the Department of Engineering
for rubber matting procurement facilitates, for the facilitation at the Ironbound Ice Hockey Rink. Councilman?
Sponsor.
Sponsor?
Second.
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
I'm sorry, can you copy? Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Captain President Ramos.
Yes.
7R5A is a ratifying, authorizing resolution for the Department of Finance for a professional services contract, provide financial advisory services.
What is this?
Council of the whole to adopt?
Financial advisor.
Pay for the invoices for last year, I believe, that's what, what's explained.
And Mr. Clerk, through, through the, um, yesterday's pre, you know, the finance director was questioned about this, so she mentioned that this is to pay an outstanding invoice from last year, but she also followed up on Councilman Sharif's question about the, uh, bringing in of new financial advisors as well, so that's something that should be coming up, perhaps at the next meeting.
Possibly at the next meeting, yes.
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes. Abstain.
Trump?
Abstain.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Rice?
Yep, abstain.
Sharif?
Yes.
Captain President Ramos.
Yes.
Adopted. 7R7A is a authorizing resolution for a Department of Law for a settlement...
Jesus.
...of demand for payment. Councilman Rice wishes to sponsor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Quintana, roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Captain President Ramos.
7R8A is a orth- ratifying and authorizing resolution for the Office of Mayor for a professional services contract for a per diem municipal public defender. Council of the whole to adopt?
Was interviewed yesterday, yes.
Yes.
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Yes. Baraka, yes, Trump?
Abstain, I missed the interview.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Quintana?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Captain President Ramos.
7R9A is a ratifying, authorizing resolution for the Office of Municipal Council City Clerk for professional services contract for the statutory ordering, auditor services for the, for the year 2012. This is Samuel Klein and Company. This is also on the list for this, from the state monitor requesting that we not take action. Council pleasure.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Do we take action, or do we don't?
I thought the recommendation yesterday from the clerk's office is that this item be deferred based on the...
The, the state monitor is requesting that we defer action on this contract.
Oh, okay.
Let me, let me, let me just add this for the, for the viewer.
We were here in pre, and this never came up yesterday.
Yeah, the, the, you know... Accretory. This, this is for the council's... The law, it's the law. ...expertise to go over the budget. That's our fiduciary responsibility. And the state's going to tell us that we can't hire who we need to help us, and not go after consulting contractors on the second floor, there's something is really wrong about this. They can't on one hand tell us that they got to pass a budget by a certain deadline, don't give us the tools and the people we need, who have been here for decades, to help us to craft this budget. And so I say, I don't give a darn what the state says, I say we move it, and we let them, and let, and let the ashes fall where they fall.
I'll second it.
Let's go.
Let's go.
Defy the state unanimously.
What are they going to do? What are they going to do? They're, they're going to deny it to us, they're going to deny it to us anyway.
That's correct.
Let's take a statement.
Absolutely.
Thanks for the clarification, Council.
You're welcome. Sorry about that. I'm just...
Surprise me, surprise me.
Roll call.
Yes. Roll call.
Yes.
Trump?
Yes, absolutely.
Gonzalez?
No.
Trump?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Captain President Ramos.
Yes.
Mr. President?
Councilman Rice.
Can we get a correspondence from the clerk's office, and I'll write it if I have to, that just says the reason why we're voting for this is because, again, and I want to make sure that whoever's writing, taking notes makes it clear, that we have a fiduciary responsibility because of the Faulkner Act to pass a budget. And for that, and when, and when the state monitor comes in and, and goes over our budget, and takes away our ability to go to do that job correctly, there's something that's wrong, and we're out of compliance, and, and, and their rules towards us is different than any other municipality throughout this entire state. That's over 566. And so I'm not going to have us, under the guise of the state coming in and examining our, 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 our dollars, to take away what is due to this council as a tool and necessary thing that we need in order to go over this budget, and to do it in a timely fashion that they're requiring us to do it. It's, it's like asking us to do something and entire our hand behind our back, and not giving us what we need in order to get the job done. And I want to make sure that they understand that, and that the mayor gets a copy of that, as well as the governor, and as well as the S's delegation.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I?
Councilman Gonzalez?
Uh, I am not, uh, in disagreement with, uh, the views expressed by Councilman Rice. However, this here says statutory auditor, so that means that they are going to audit the books of the city, and that happens at the end of the year, not for the budget. We are using them as assistance in the budget preparation, but they, this is not the contract for that.
I understand.
This contract is for auditing the books of the city, and the books of the city close on December 31st. So, this is not for the budget preparation.
I understand.
But, 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 it's, they provide the services for the, for the budget preparation, but they are not being contracted for budget preparation unless it is included here. The title here does not, doesn't show that it's for, also for budget preparation.
Can you clarify, Mr. Clerk?
It, it, those additional services are part of the contract.
Yeah, but let's say, it's not included here. I believe we should have, uh, let's say, a clear agenda indicating what services we're contracting for, in addition to the audit.
Well, Mr. Chair?
The clerk just said, the clerk just said...
Councilwoman.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, I didn't mean to be rude.
Yeah. Mr. Clerk, are you done?
Excuse me?
Are you done responding to Councilman Gonzalez?
Yes, the, the, these, these additional services are part of the contract.
Council McCrumb.
Services.
I was going to say, he just told you the answer to that question.
No, yes.
And, and you, as well as the rest of us, are aware, you know, let, let's not play with the words.
Yes.
Uh, it's, it's the, the purpose, um, and I think Councilman Rice, uh, explained it clearly, and, um, th- there can be no other decision than to support ourselves and support the community. We need the, the services. Um, none of us, at this point in time, in, um, in this economy are going to be crazy enough to vote on a contract this large without knowing we're getting what we're paying for.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
It was everything.
Next item.
Including the watershed. We need that.
We need everything.
7R9B is a authorizing resolution for the Office of Municipal Council City Clerk for approval of a constable bond. C is a ratifying, authorizing resolution for the Office of Municipal Council City Clerk for a whole harms and indemnification agreement for film night for Black History Month. D is, let's do, through C, Council of the whole to adopt?
Roll call.
Amador?
Yes.
Baraka?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes.
Ivana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Payne, absent, President Ramos.
Yes.
D is an authorizing resolution for the Office of Municipal Counsel City Clerk for a whole harms and indemnification agreement. Councilman Rice wishes to table at this time.
No. Yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
We have a corrected verdict moving through legislature.
Thank you.
Do I have a second to table?
Second. Quintana.
Quintana, roll call to table.
Amador.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, to table.
Yes.
I won't walk out of this.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Payne, absent, President Ramos.
Yes.
E is a resolution authorizing Office of Municipal Counsel City Clerk for a ceremonial dedication. This is a street naming for Dawn Reddick, sponsored by Councilman Payne and Baraka.
Yes.
F is various recognizing and commanding resolutions. G are various expressions of profound sorrow and regret. Through seven R nine G, Council of the Hold to adopt.
Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Yes, you went again, Counselman.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Ivana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Sharif. Payne, absent, President Ramos.
Yes.
Through the added starter page, seven R three D is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Economic and Housing Development for the private sale and redevelopment for Atlantic Street Fidelco LLC.
Where's the, uh, Council of the Hold to adopt?
Yes.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Abstain.
Crump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to abstain, but I'll say Y at the end.
Sharif.
Yes.
absent, President Ramos.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Councilman Rice.
I abstain because I just wasn't clear on the resolutions and the ordinance listed, I guess that this is going to cover the two seventy-five. There's language on the bottom. I was just unclear about it, so I'm not going to vote something. I just don't understand what I'm voting for, so.
Clerk, would you have Mr. Fearon meet with Councilman Rice to explain?
If I may, Mr. President, Mr. Counselman, if you recall, some months ago, there was a parcel of land that belonged to New Jersey Transit, and New Jersey Transit was releasing that parcel. However, they could not sell it directly to, under their rules, they could not sell it directly to the developer. They sold it to the city, and the city is now selling it to the developer to make it part of the parcel that he's working on in this area. That's what this, this is the transmittal of that property to the new developer.
Mr. Fearon will be more than happy to visit.
Yeah, just, yeah.
If you'd, I'll have, if you'd like, Mr. Fearon to give you a call and go through the details.
I'll change my answer yes on that.
Note, Councilman Baraka's changed to a yes.
Yeah, the city acted as a conduit.
Conduit for the property, yes.
Yeah, I just didn't, yeah.
Next item, sir.
Seven R four E is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Engineering for a bid contract for the remediation and demolition of the Hayes Park East. Councilman Amador wishes to sponsor.
Sponsor, yeah.
Amador Quintana.
Who's this?
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Abstain.
Crump.
Abstain.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Ivana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Payne, absent, President Ramos.
This was Hayes Park.
Yes. So you both said yes.
Counselman?
Yes, yes, you voted yes.
Okay.
Seven R nine H is an authorizing resolution for the Office of Municipal Counsel City Clerk for a whole harms and indemnification agreement.
We're going to get out and walk out.
Walking out.
This one is good.
Councilman Rice.
Be my guest.
Second.
I'm walking out.
Rice Gonzalez, roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Your pin light.
Yes.
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 Quintana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Payne, absent, President Ramos.
Yes.
Communications, eight A is an ordinance amending section twenty-three colon eleven dash four traffic control signal monitoring systems. This would add additional locations for the traffic control monitoring system, the cameras. Council of the Hold to advance the first reading.
Yes.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Ivana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mr. President, under motions, as it relates to this item, I ask, through motion, for an evaluation of the corner of Elizabeth Avenue and Route seventy-eight turns. I can't, is it West Runyon? I think it's West Runyon. I had asked before, and I still haven't heard.
And through the clerk, for the council members, Mr. Nada did provide us with, I guess, a working map of where these locations are approved and pending, so you should have it on your desk.
It's in the package.
Okay. Next item.
Eight B is an authorizing resolution. This is for the Office of the Mayor appointing Oscar Rodriguez to the Taxicab Commission. We did the interview yesterday.
He was interviewed, yes.
Yes. Council of the Hold?
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Crump.
Abstain. I wasn't here for the interview.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Ivana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Seven R, oh, I'm sorry, nine A is an ordinance amending Title nineteen rent control. This would change the procedure by which landlords may obtain a tax surcharge. Councilman Sharif wishes to defer action at this time.
Yes, defer, please. I'll second that deferment.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Payne, absent, President Ramos.
Yes.
Motion?
Motion, Councilman Amador.
One, just a list from the administration of individuals who work for the city and are considered to be nonessential, who are taking cars home. Again.
Second, someone?
Second.
Second, Quintana, roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Quintana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Payne, absent, President Ramos.
Yes. Councilman Baraka.
I'd like to make a motion to send the Port Authority to request that at least fifty percent of all of its meetings are held in New Jersey. I'd like to congratulate the winners of week four of the South Ward Reeds Literacy Competition from Peshawna Avenue School and Miss Donovan, the eighth grade class. I would like to ask the residents of the South Ward to join me tomorrow at the Hall of Records at the Freeholders Meeting to lobby for more Essex County Police on the county roads.
What time is that?
That meeting is at seven PM in the lobby of the Hall of Records, four sixty-five Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard. The follow-up for our men's meeting is at Weekway High School this coming Friday at six PM. I'd also like to invite folks to the Dawn Reddick Street Naming Ceremony that'll be held on Monday at five PM on the corner of Hansberry and Maple Avenue School. That's it, thank you.
Second, someone?
Second.
Counselman Gonzalez, roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Payne, absent, President Ramos.
Yes. Counselman Crump.
Thank you. First, motion of sorrow and regret at the passing of our historic council, I'm sorry, Congressman Donald Lim Payne Jr. Messages have been pouring into Newark from all over the world, expressing profound sorrow at the passing, especially from my friends who live on the continent. He brought a perspective to his position where he worked diligently to link the continent of Africa to African Americans who live in the diaspora and will be greatly, greatly remembered. A meeting with Keith Kennard, Mr. President, I can't speak for anyone else's office, but I get a number of complaints and concerns from people who live in public housing, especially about something called the Dropbox. A few months ago, the Port Authority, I'll get it right, a few months ago, the Housing Authority changed its procedure for collecting its rent, and it's causing seniors in particular some difficulty. And so if we could have a meeting with Mr. Kennard as soon as possible, it would be most helpful. That's it.
Second, someone?
Second.
Second, back in town, a roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Ivana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Payne, absent, President Ramos.
Yes.
Counselman Gonzalez, I'm sorry. No motions. Counselman Quintana?
Yes, Mr. President. Number, yesterday, we talked about the inventory of the motor pool, the inventory of all the cars, the city cars, who are, where they're assigned to, where they're going at night, if somebody has a car that is leaving the city of Newark, the easy pass for the police and every department, if any easy pass. Now, I also want to prepare some legislation. Any municipal vehicle leaving the city of, the state of New Jersey, we need to have an explanation of why. Why is that vehicle going outside of the city? If it occurs, if there's an accident, that driver will be responsible. I'd like to have the easy passes. Also, in that same note, I'd like to know, within the administration, who are the individuals who are driven by police officers? And why is it, where are those persons detailed to? And why does it detail of importance? Because we're talking about, we need police officers, but we got people being chauffeured by police officers. I'm not against the police, but it's time to, you know, the state of the city has said, look, it's time to do some sacrificing. Well, it's time, let me tell you something. As long as I'm the councilman in this city, I've driven to every neighborhood of this city. I ain't scared of nobody. I go into any neighborhood, if somebody's scared and needs to be driven, then they shouldn't be here. They shouldn't be here, because that means you're scared of the city you live in. So again, I like the, I like to have the list of any persons who are detailed to any particular detail. And I also would like to know, again, any municipal employee.
At the end.
Any political persons who are political appointments. If you have a vehicle, it cannot be a confidential plate. You must have an MG plate. You can't just have a police vehicle assigned to you. And if that's so, then you need to go get your MG plates put on your car, and it's time to stop hiding. So these are the things that I'm proposing, I've been proposing for us to get information, and it has been months and months, and I'm tired of not getting the information that we deserve to get. The other matter is, I also like to do, from the administration, how much did we invest it in the training of a hundred and sixty-some police officers that those other cities benefited from our training of police officers who now work in Union County, work outside, and we spend, taxpayers spend money training these police officers. So again, I'd like to have the breaking down of how many of those police officers, and why don't we get reimbursed? And we should have gotten reimbursed for training those police officers, where other municipalities now are benefiting from what Newark spent.
Second, Councilman Rice, roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Ivana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Payne, absent, President Ramos.
Yes. Counselman Rice.
Yes, I want to echo sentiments of my colleagues regarding the passing of Congressman Payne, our colleague's father. The newspapers called and asked me what my earliest remembrance of the congressman was, and I said it was nineteen eighty, I guess, when he first ran for Congress, and he brought, my dad used to have a civic association and an old shoe store off of South Orange Avenue, and he brought his black and white signs for us to hang up, and that was the first time I learned how to hang up campaign signs in that year. So just nice memories to think back on when someone that special leaves. And so my condolences to his family and to those in the city of Newark who mourn his loss. Just a quick announcement, a couple of quick announcements. Just want to invite residents of the West Ward and those throughout the city to our fourth annual State of the West Ward address, which will be Saturday, March twenty-fourth, at ten AM at Speedway School off of South Orange Avenue. Our message this year is all in. Please come out. We'll have a number of tables of all of our nonprofits in the ward, our block association, our block federation, our mentors program, our Boy Scouts program, Pop Warner, Little League, all the things, initiatives that are going on in the ward that we need people to be involved in. So we invite you not only just to come and hear about what's going on in the ward and what the plans are going forward, but also to get involved in making your ward better. The West Ward Block, monthly, the monthly West Ward Block Federation meeting is this Thursday at Central Assembly of God, ninety-two South Sixth Street, six PM to eight PM. We have a full agenda, but the biggest issues we will be talking about will be the clothing bins in and around the ward and how we regulate them, the West Ward cleaning initiative that will start taking place in April, and ABC, the Alcohol and Beverages Committee will be, Commission will be there to talk about bar closings of two infamous bars on Sanford Avenue, which shall remain nameless, and Operation Ceasefire, a representative will be here from the city for that. I'd like to request from the Newark Police Department that they assign and deploy Operation Ceasefire. I didn't know it was around until the State of the City address, so I'm assuming they're doing it. So I'd like to request it for two locations in the West Ward, since I don't think we have any Operation Ceasefires, between South Eighth Street and South Twelfth Street, and the borders being Fourteenth Avenue and Central Avenue, and the second location being Munn up to Sunset from South Orange Avenue over to Eighteenth Avenue. And last but not least, we still need men to be part of our West Ward Mentors Program. If you are a gentleman, you don't have to be from the West Ward, but if you're willing to mentor a young brother from seven to fifteen years of age, please contact my office directly, nine seven three seven three three six four two seven. Training for the spring will occur in April, and we hope to deploy the men that have come forth in the month of May, and that's it.
Second.
Second.
By Counselman Sharif, roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Ivana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
What we going to see? Yes. Counselman Sharif.
Yes. From the clerk, can I have a copy of the application that was submitted in January of two thousand and nine for the proposed MUA that went to local finance, and a written explanation from the administration why they requested that application to be pulled back from local finance. Also, to the administration through the clerk, all of the names, the salaries, and the job descriptions that accompany the information provided in the mayor's spending plan, and for each department in the document, a table of organization with also an operations or a flow diagram, which would help me understand how the different departments operate. And finally, on that, a list of all of the performance indicators and metrics that they established last year for last year's budget, so that I can look at those and compare them to the metrics and the performance indicators that they have for this year. And finally, a list for all of two thousand and eleven and so far for two thousand and twelve, a list of employees and professional service contracts from Brick City Development Corporation, and also a table of organization.
Good. Thank you.
Second.
Second, by Counselman Rice.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Ivana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Payne, absent, President Ramos.
Yes. I guess I'm left. Just from my office, a letter to the Director Arnold and Fire Director Ziyad regarding the demolition of properties that present a health and safety concern for residents. You know, we're starting to see a proliferation of properties that have been affected by fires, that have been abandoned for quite some time, and, you know, we get a lot of calls and requests regarding the demolition process. So maybe we can have a brief sit-down with them. You know, is it a budgetary issue on the city side? Are we not successful in getting the owners to demolish? You know, we definitely are seeing an increase in those kinds of calls. For the second straight year, my office is helping North Ward homeowners who are interested in filing tax appeals. Individuals that are interested can call my office to pre-register. We haven't finalized the date yet. If you want to send us a message on Facebook, email, we just need to get an idea of how many individuals are interested, homeowners, in coming in. Last year, we helped a lot of seniors from, you know, the ward to file tax appeals. At the last council meeting, I asked for an update on the hiring of a tax assessor. We haven't received anything from the administration yet. We did get another letter from the Essex County Tax Assessor, expressing their concern on the fact that we haven't had a representative there for quite some time. You know, I remind this body that we are going through a revow, and for us to be going through a revow without a tax assessor in place is kind of scary. So we need to get an answer from them relatively quickly as to when that position is going to be officially filled. And lastly, you know, as part of our battle to continue to promote, you know, better quality of life, we're getting a ton of calls and complaints because, you know, businesses and homeowners are getting fined for garbage and debris, but it seems like we have, you know, a thousand groups out there putting flyers in people's cars, dropping circulars, a lot of supermarkets, you know, putting circulars in bags, you know, throwing them on people's lawns, and, you know, the code enforcement side is now aggressively pursuing fines, but I think we need to go after some of these individuals and groups that are putting up posters illegally on electric poles and other bases that are dropping these circulars and putting flyers in people's cars. So we need some kind of strategy session, because this is creating a lot of issues with litter in different neighborhoods around the city. That's it for me.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Payne, absent, President Ramos.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Counselman, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I forgot to make an announcement, an important announcement, I think. It's time for the Newark Women's Conference again. The date is March thirty-first of this year. It is going to be held at the University of Medicine and Dentistry, but we will be in the new dental building. As you know, it is our opportunity, as women and men are invited, but as women to come together, for women to, yes, for women to come together to discuss strategies and methods by which we can improve the quality of the lives of our families and the people around us. We always honor women of distinction, and this list, I think, is extremely impressive. Kalina Berryman from ALI, Chief of Police, Sheila Coley, Liz Del Tufo, Margarita Muniz, who will be representing Lupe y Latinas United for Public Education, Political Education, Alberta Gordon, Wel McGrave, Hannah Handi, Joyce Wilson Harley, Lillian Plata, Mary Sue Sweeney, and Raquel Ramos. And so if you're not doing anything and you want to spend a great day for a small amount of money, the registration fee is fifty dollars for regular. It is twenty-five for seniors, but it's well worth it. We have a great luncheon, a great luncheon speaker, I dare not say her name, because everybody will be rushing. We want to give everybody a chance to register. So March thirty-first, save the date. At the University of Medicine and Dentistry for more information, please feel free to stop by my office. And I'm going to ask the gentlemen on the council if they would also carry flyers as well.
I'll be there.
Thank you. He's going to be there.
Second, I'll second this one. Roll call.
Amador.
Yes.
Baraka.
Yes.
Crump.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Ivana.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Payne, absent, President Ramos.
Yes.
Hearing of citizens. Welcome to the Newark Municipal Council's Hearing of Citizens. Only those individuals who have signed up by the closing deadline will be permitted